Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zukovich. Welcome to the November 4th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. We like to use this time to let you know about activities going on around Sedgwick County. And first to remind you, it is past November 1st, so that means our Sedgwick County Zoo is into our winter hours. They're open from 10:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. And of course, that means they're open even on holidays. And of course, coming up Commissioners, on the 11th, the Sedgwick County Courthouse and our services will be closed for a Veterans Day holiday, but you can of course go to the zoo, they will be open. And for veterans and their families, and military and their family, active military, they are allowing folks to get in for free. So we encourage folks to go out and enjoy the zoo. Hopefully, we will have some good weather on the 11th. Also, to remind you, we have started Winter Wednesdays at the zoo, and that means $2.50 admission on days like today. So we invite folks to go out to the zoo and support the zoo. And again, Winter Wednesdays, $2.50 admission through February. Also, coming up this weekend at Exploration Place, we do have Gingerbread Village, that is the 13th, 14th, and 15th. And they do have a new exhibit open, it's called Design Zone, so hope that you will get out to enjoy the activities at Exploration Place. And Commissioners, Thunder are back in action, the Thunder Hockey, November 8th and 11th are their next games at the Interst Bank Arena. So if you like a little fast action, maybe a little pushing and shoving, that's the place you want to be. I do have a special guest this morning, I do have Susan Erlinwine here this morning to talk to you about a remote household hazardous waste pickup.
Thank you Kristy. Good morning Commissioners. As Kristy mentioned, we have a Household Hazardous Waste Remote Collection Event this Saturday at the Extension Office, which is located at 21st Street North and Ridge Road on the southeast corner. As you know, citizens can take their household hazardous waste to our facility located at 801 Stillwell. That's open from Tuesday through Friday, 8 to 5, and Saturday, 8 to 3. But to better serve our community, we have remote events like the one this Saturday, so we encourage people to go to a location such as the Extension, which might be located closer to their home. So we want them to bring their used oil, gasoline, paints, solvents, cleaners, any materials that they don't need at their home anymore for proper recycling and disposal at this remote collection event. So it's this Saturday, Extension Office, southeast corner of 21st and Ridge, enter off of Ridge Road, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So we encourage people to come. And as a reminder, with Thanksgiving coming, some people like to deep fry their turkeys, we'll take that used oil from them as well at the HHW facility. So please dispose your material properly, go to the Sedgwick County website, you can find more information on what the facility accepts. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Peter John.
Yes, this is the, I believe this is the fifth of these events we've held this year, and this is the last for calendar year 2015. Am I correct in that Susan?
That's correct. And we've never had it at the Extension before, or this time in the fall, so we're really looking forward to it. The weather looks like it's going to be good this weekend for the event.
Thank you.
Thank you Kristy very much.
Commissioners, before we get to today's agenda, I want you to look up there at your desk, because there is just a whole bunch of things for you to munch on. I have brought you some peanuts this morning, because I thought we needed to stay in a little bit longer with the royal celebrations, since we couldn't be up there with the big crowd. So you have a little peanuts there to enjoy, and I think you'll find out about the fruit here in just a little bit with the, one of the proclamations. But it's time for us to kind of think about the blue for a couple more days, and then I want you to start thinking about transitioning to the black and gold, because you know the Shockers are going to start playing, and we know they're going to be playing December 12th at the arena. So again, we'll swear the blue a little bit longer, kind of yay, look at us, we're the champs, and then let's get into being the champs for the Shockers. And also Commissioners, today, on our agenda, we do have those three proclamations. We have one for National Philanthropy Day, one for Junior ROTC Leadership Week, one for National Eating Healthy Day, and we will have discussions this morning about the Community Investments Plan and our quarterly financial report. But, it seems like I've really talked a lot this morning to you. Before we get past here, I would like to take the moment to introduce our new county manager, who is here observing today, Brigadier General Mike Scholes and his wife Jessica are here, and if you'd like to come up and say a welcome and let folks see who you are. Jessica, you want to come on out?
Well, it's always dangerous to give a general officer a microphone, so. But really, Jessica and I are excited to be here as observers. I can't officially start until Saturday, but wanted to stop by and see everybody and get to know everybody, but really to support JROTC, which is actually how I got my start, was in JROTC, so I support anything they do. But certainly Jessica and I are happy to be here. We bought a house, so it's official. We're digging in, I've got the battle scars to prove it, unpacking boxes and getting kids to school and such. But I look forward to it, we're honored to be here and excited about the opportunity, and excited to be Sedgwick County citizens. Thank you.
And we will see the, our new manager on duty on Monday, so, and then we don't have a meeting on Wednesday. So he really picked a great week, because we won't have, we won't be here because of Veterans Day, we will be closed, but we'll be back at it the next week on the 18th. So I think I have talked enough, I think you've got plenty of business to take care of, so Chairman Ranzau, how about if we get things underway?
Absolutely. Mike and Jessica, we're very happy to have you with us today. With that, we'll call it over to the regular meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for November 4th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Daniel Circle for Salem Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we want to begin today by acknowledging your sovereignty and your holiness in the universe. We want to thank you for another day and this free and prosperous nation, and for the blessings that we enjoy here in Sedgwick County. Father, we thank you for these public servants who give of their lives in the management of our county affairs, and we want to invoke your presence here today, Father. Your wisdom, your compassion, and your direction, as we seek to do the business of the county with integrity and efficiency. Father, we ask you to cover our first responders and public safety personnel with security and protection. Help us to find ways to lift up those who find themselves in need, Lord, and to manage a compassionate government for all of the citizens. Father, we pray that your character, your fairness, your righteousness would be evident here in this day, and we commit this meeting into your hands and to your glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, for being here today. We appreciate that. Next item, please.
Rule call, Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ranzau.
Present. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 23, 2015, Commissioner Norton was absent.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Chairman, I would like to make a motion, we adopt the minutes for September 23rd of 2015.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Abstain.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item B, regular meeting minutes of October 7, 2015, all Commissioners were present.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the minutes of October 7th and the minutes of October 15th, 2015.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item D, proclamation declaring National Philanthropy Day.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation to read into the record. Whereas the Greater Wichita Chapter of the Association of Fundraising Professionals fosters effective and ethical professionals to inspire the spirit of philanthropy, and whereas the Greater Wichita Chapter of the Association of Fundraising Professionals is committed to supporting development professionals throughout Wichita and the surrounding area, and whereas the members of the Greater Wichita Chapter of the Association of Fundraising Professionals work to advance philanthropy through advocacy, research, education, and certification programs. The Association fosters development and growth of fundraising professionals and promotes high ethical standards in the fundraising profession. And whereas the impact of the charitable sector and the increasing role it plays in our societies and countries around the world contributes billions of dollars a year, increases millions of programs and services connecting individuals to causes and each other. And whereas philanthropy fosters civic participation and improves the quality of life of all individuals. And whereas National Philanthropy Day is a special day set aside to recognize and pay tribute to the great contributions that philanthropy and those people active in the philanthropic community have made for our lives, our communities, and our world. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ranzau, Chairman of the Board, Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 13th, 2015 as National Philanthropy Day. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I move we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. And we have Autumn Lawson and Amy Tolle from Art Partners here to receive the proclamation.
We want to thank the Commissioners for celebrating the important role that philanthropy plays in the Wichita community. And we at AFP believe that it is the result of the generosity of Kansans that have made this community a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And it is with pride that we honor the philanthropic contributions of Tanya Tandock, Outstanding Philanthropist, awarded posthumously, Justice Fugate, Outstanding Volunteer Fundraiser, Deanne Smith, Outstanding Fundraising Executive, Doddlinger &amp; Sons Construction Company, Outstanding Corporation, Dakiel Family Foundation, Outstanding Foundation, Carol Nazar, Distinctive Community Service Award, and Robert Swanson, President's Award. And we would love to see all of you at the awards luncheon, the National Philanthropy Day Awards Luncheon on November 13th. It begins at 11:30 a.m., and it is at the Hyatt Regency Wichita, and we will celebrate the amazing contribution of these honorees. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the individuals that you recognize as well, we appreciate everybody's hard work and contributions. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next item, please.
Item E, proclamation declaring Junior ROTC Leadership Week.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation to read into the record. Whereas Junior ROTC was officially implemented in American high schools in 1916, began in Kansas in 1917, and in Wichita in 1994, and whereas Cadet leadership programs were started in selected middle schools in 1997, making Wichita a leader in the nation in this initiative. And whereas the Junior ROTC and leadership programs are recognized in Wichita for building citizenship and good character in our youth, and whereas there are now more than 2,300 Wichita youth participating as cadets in 19 of our public schools. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ranzau, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 7th through 13th, November 15th, 2015, as Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week, in recognition of these fine young men and women who are becoming better leaders and citizens for their future through their involvement in Junior ROTC and leadership programs. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. And we have Colonel Robert Hester here today to receive the proclamation.
Thank you very much sir, thank you Commissioners, it's great to be here. I've got Nathaniel Strifler, Colonel Strifler is our core commander this year, and he's going to tell you about the Junior ROTC program and our Veterans Day activities here in Wichita. Nathaniel Strifler.
Thank you Chairman. Good morning ladies and gentlemen, I'm Cadet Colonel Nathaniel Strifler. I am a senior at Wichita High School North, and it's my privilege to be a commander of the USD 259 JROTC program. On Saturday, November 7th, Wichita JROTC will be hosting the 2015 Spirit Aero Systems Veterans Day Parade. The parade will start at 11:00 a.m. at Central and Main, and will conclude at the Water Walk, where there will be food vendors, a car show, and family activities. We currently have over 70 entries, which will be one of the largest parades in Wichita seen in recent years. The First Infantry Division from Fort Riley, Kansas, will participate both on the ground and in the air with personnel and vehicles such as Blackhawk helicopters and Abrams tank. After the parade, the American Legion will be at the Water Walk, serving their mission to collect toys for children of soldiers who are currently in the transition program. Several organizations will be collecting non-perishable food items to send to troops overseas in Afghanistan. The second opportunity to show support to our veterans is on Monday, November 9th. The USD 259 JROTC program will host a salute to veterans at 10:00 a.m. This will be the 21st annual event that will be held at Century 2, and is a recognition of veterans who have served our country. We will be having our 2,400 Cadet Corps with a pass and review. Many veterans will be in attendance, and we are honored to have Colonel Alan Hobson as a guest speaker. One of the core values of JROTC program is selfless service. I believe these community events are an opportunity to show support to our veterans and current active military personnel and families. I invite you to join us all Saturday, we're at Century 2 on Monday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for your leadership and everything that you guys do. And I believe Commissioner Unruh has some words.
Well, Commissioners, I'd just like to, just to mention that in our Veterans Day ceremony this next Monday at 10 o'clock at Century 2, this is the only time during the school year that we get all of our cadets in one place at one time. And we're up to 2,400 this year, most of them are going to be in formation in the Expo Hall, that's the only facility large enough to hold us now, and it's a pretty impressive sight. They're not, when they do the pass and review at the conclusion of the ceremony, they're not going to be perfect, but they're going to look very, very good. I encourage everyone to come out and see them. You will be, I guarantee you, you will be very impressed with these cadets who range from 6th to 12th grade. And our Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, we've, we have been conducting the Wichita Parade for 13 years now. This year, Spirit Aero Systems is our primary benefactor for supporting the cost in conducting this parade, and we're very happy that they are doing that. And Nathaniel said we've got over 70, we're up to over 80 now, so we're getting a lot of entries. This is potentially going to be the best, the largest, and the best parade that we've ever had.
Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Well, Colonel Hester and Colonel Strifler, I want to congratulate you both on a good job this year for your continued success from JROTC. Having a parade that large is really quite remarkable, and I want to congratulate you on the success of that. But more than that, I just want to say that we really appreciate your influence on the young people in our community, and giving them an important alternative for the use of some of their time. You build in discipline and respect and patriotism in these young people, and those are lessons and character qualities that I think will stay with them throughout their life. So this is an important program, and Colonel Hester, thank you very much for your continued dedication to blessing us with this activity in our community.
Thank you very much sir.
Commissioner Norton.
Well, I've been to many of the assemblies at the Century 2, and I have to tell you, to see that many young people, that many teenagers staying that disciplined for that long is an incredible sight. I had four teenagers at one time in my home, and it was incredibly hard just to keep them together, and I can't imagine 2,400 plus. But you do a wonderful job with the young people, and we're so proud. I won't be able to be there for the Veterans Day Parade, because I'll be in Hazville, they have a ceremony there. It's always the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, so if you know about Veterans Day, there's many ceremonies that happen at that same time, including parades and memorial services. So I wish you all the luck with your parade. I would encourage people to bring toys and food, because I saw, heard today on the news that a lot of it is going to go up to Fort Riley for wounded warriors that have come back to help them with the process of integrating back into society and dealing with the issues that they've brought back with them from being overseas. And this Veterans Day will have a little bit of a special time for us. My son-in-law has just arrived in Qatar and will be there for six or seven months in his deployment. So we'll be thinking of a military person right in our family on Veterans Day to keep him safe, like we think of all of our men and women that serve us overseas, to protect us from whatever threats might be. So, thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you Mr. Chairman, I was just going to add that I have also had the opportunity to attend the ceremony at Century 2, and it's very impressive to see all that many young people, because high school kids, in my experience, often have pulled things, the students who have really excelling or are doing well, but it's the middle school students that, it's the ones that really, really impress me in terms of that regard, because at the younger age, it's a challenge. But regarding the 11th hour of the 11th day of November, I mean, that was what was often called Armistice Day or the end of World War I. And since we're rapidly approaching the 100th anniversary of that very important date, and 100th anniversary will be in 2018, I think it's important to kind of get that historical footnote on the record this morning, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, I had the privilege of speaking at a Junior ROTC event just a couple weeks ago with Colonel Dillard, and I guess I remember learning at that time some of the stats that are in this proclamation today, and it was jaw dropping frankly, to see what's really going on in our community. You know, for people who work all day long and get involved in the busyness of life, they may not realize what's going on in our community, and this is one of those positive things that, to me, was really impressive. When I was in high school, I graduated from Southeast High School, I don't remember any type of program like this, and of course, it says in this, adopted in Wichita schools in 1997, so maybe my memory is correct, I hope that's right, but what's going on around us right now, to know that there's more than 2,000 high school students, 6th grade through 12th grade that are involved in this program, is just really impressive. To me, it is an amazing, amazing factoid, the people in the community, I hope they understand what's going on. There's young people in our community that are self-driven, volunteering, and learning discipline and service and patriotism, and they're showing maturity in their actions. So I'm just very, very impressed, and I know that when I realized this just a few weeks ago, I wanted to find a way to, I guess, tell others. And so I'm really glad you're here today to receive this proclamation. I hope that this gets a lot of visibility, I hope the newspapers put this in the headlines, and I just, I just think that the people in our community need to know what's going on around them. To me, it's extremely encouraging, and I'm just very, very happy to see such great participation. I wanted to say to Colonel Strifler, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. Your uniform looks fantastic.
Yes.
I remember my Air Force days, my .3510 was always a challenge, and so you look fantastic, your fruit salad is amazing, that's that little placard up in his upper left hand part of his uniform. You know, the fact that they wear the uniform so carefully, and they are respectful in the way they conduct their ceremonies, showing respect to the flag, and just really getting involved in the things in our community, I'm just really, really impressed with what you guys are doing, so please keep it up, and I hope you guys will increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Colonel Hester, Colonel Strifler, for being here today.
All right, thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Item F, proclamation declaring National Eating Healthy Day.
Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you Mr. Chairman, I have a proclamation to read into the record this morning. Whereas cardiovascular diseases are the nation's leading cause of death, accounting for one out of three deaths nationwide, whereas more than 40% of the United States adult population is projected to have some form of cardiovascular disease by 2030, with direct and indirect costs exceeding $1 trillion annually, and whereas the research is clear that there are preventative strategies, such as eating nutritious, healthy foods, and eating only enough to meet energy needs that can increase survival rates for cardiovascular diseases, and whereas the American Heart Association's 2020 Impact Goal seeks to improve the cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20% while reducing deaths from cardiovascular diseases and strokes by 20%, and whereas the American Heart Association created National Eating Healthy Day to help companies keep their employees healthy, which will help both their company and our country improve cardiovascular health. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ranzau, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 4th, 2015, as National Eating Healthy Day in Sedgwick County, and urge all citizens and employees to recognize the importance of improved nutrition and healthy eating both at home and in the workplace. By doing so, we can prevent cardiovascular disease and reduce healthcare costs due to cardiovascular disease.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I move we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. And we have Nancy Dueling with us here today from the American Heart Association.
Yes, thank you so much. The American Heart Association is committed to helping all Americans live longer and healthier. By joining our National Eating Healthy Day celebration, you can take a big step toward a healthier lifestyle by making small changes to incorporate healthier food choices. More than two-thirds of American adults and one in three children are overweight or obese, putting them at risk for heart disease and stroke, as well as many other chronic illnesses and conditions. Eating healthier, and specifically eating more fruits and vegetables, is an important way to help maintain a healthy weight and way to help maintain a healthy weight and prevent disease. By 2020, we want to improve that cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20%, while reducing deaths from heart disease and stroke by 20%. We cannot reach this aggressive goal alone. Together with partners like you, we can make a significant impact and reach more Americans with life-saving information. I truly appreciate this opportunity, and thank you for letting us communicate about National Eating Healthy Day, and hope that you'll enjoy your fruit bags that you have on your table. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Commissioner Norton?
Well, I sit on the Health and Wellness Coalition Leadership Team, and we've distilled down over the years to really two very, very important issues. One of them is physical activity, and the other one is eating healthy. And it is pretty simple, and trying to promote that in a community is, is critical. We know that there are portions of our community that are considered food deserts. In fact, we're working on an area around West High School with the Wichita Promise neighborhoods right now to try to figure out how to affect that area and neighborhood. I see Lou Ellis Sanders here today, and she works on that through the United Way. Critically important in our community to find ways to get healthy foods, fruits and vegetables to every segment of our society. It is just not good enough to say that there are portions of our community that don't live within three miles of a full-service grocery store. And that offers fresh meats, fruits, fruits and vegetables, whole grains, and many other healthy products. And we need to work on that as a community. I know our Health Department thinks about it, the Health and Wellness Coalition thinks about it, the Heart Association thinks about it, and many other nonprofit organizations. And you're right, we all have to pull together to change the dynamic in our community. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you. And I would like to go back to the physical activity. We do have our Heart Walk on June 18th out at Wichita State University, so we would invite you all to participate in that activity also. So, thank you.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, because I was going to, I appreciate the segue into the activity side of it because I had the opportunity this weekend to see a whole bunch of young people who were definitely in shape, and, and I used to be in that category when I could run 20 to 30 miles a week like these young people were doing. And if you do that, you certainly get a little opportunity to expand your calorie options when, when you put that type of activity in place. And for folks who aren't into running, swimming, bicycling, and a variety of other activities, and even walking can be perfectly excellent substitutes. And, and so it's not only the food side, and I appreciate anything blue this week, Go Royals, but, but, but it's really a two-part equation in terms of not only healthy eating, but also getting out there and get active.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Planning Department, Item G, Community Investment Plan 2015 through 2035, 2035.
Good morning, Commissioner Chairman, and, I'm sorry, Chairman Ranza and Commissioners. I'm Dave Barber with the Planning Department, and it's my pleasure today to introduce this item to you. This is the approval of the Community Investments Plan 2015, 2035, as the new Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. I'll take you through a brief overview of the need for the plan, the plan development process, and the plan highlights. As you know, cities and counties in Kansas are required to have a comprehensive plan if they wish to authorize subdivision regulation within their jurisdiction. And the city of Wichita has had a comprehensive plan since 1923, and we've had a joint Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan since the early 1960s. Our existing plan dates back to 1993, and new policy guidance is needed at this time to address the current issues that are facing our community. So I'll take you through the plan development process. In 2011, the city and the county partnered with WSU to undertake a comprehensive assessment of city and county infrastructure and facilities. And in late 2012, an 18-member Plan Steering Committee was jointly appointed by the city and the county to begin the development of a new joint comprehensive plan. And seven of the Plan Steering Committee members are also members of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And then during 2013 and 2014, the Steering Committee developed and evaluated three possible long-term growth scenarios for Wichita. Following extensive community engagement process in the spring and summer of 2014, which included four open-house meetings and nine community discussion meetings, a preferred growth scenario was selected by the committee to serve as a basis for the development of the new comprehensive plan. And in March of this year, the Steering Committee released a draft Community Investments Plan for public review and feedback. The Planning Department organized four public open-house events earlier this year and provided over 40 presentations during the month of April through June to over 700 people on the plan. We also received feedback from the Activate Wichita website. The Steering Committee met in late June to finalize changes to the draft plan based upon the feedback that they'd received from community engagement, plus the feedback from two workshops with the Wichita City Council and feedback from yourselves. In all, the Steering Committee met a total of 46 times over two and a half years to develop and finalize this plan. In late June and early July, staff briefed members of the Commissioners and the Planning Commission as well on the sta, on the status of the plan. In early August, we presented the draft Community Investments Plan to the six district advisory boards in the city of Wichita. All six boards voted unanimously to recommend that the plan be adopted as the new comprehensive plan for Wichita and Sedgwick County. And at a public hearing held on August 20th, the MAPC unanimously approved a resolution adopting the Community Investments Plan as the new comprehensive plan for Wichita-Sedgwick County. Now, this plan does not take effect until it is approved by both governing bodies. The plan did go before the Wichita City Council for approval on October 6th. City Council decided at that time to table action until the November 10th City Council meeting next week to see what their county partners would be doing with the plan today. I'll take you through some of the plan highlights. The plan is primarily focused on the city of Wichita and its continued growth into the unincorporated areas of Sedgwick County over the next 20 years. There is a strong focus on setting public infrastructure spending priorities for both the city and the county. Now, the plan contains these seven core community values outlined on the slide, and they describe and reflect our community approach for the purposes of developing this plan. And these core community values are: common sense approach, fiscal responsibility, growth-oriented, inclusiveness and connectivity, cultural richness, vibrant neighborhoods, and quality design. The plan also contains these five guiding principles that reflect at a very basic and high level the overall guidance and direction contained in the plan, and they are as follows: number one, support an innovative, vibrant, and diverse economy; number two, invest in the quality of our community life; number three, take better care of what we already have; number four, make strategic value-added investment decisions; and lastly, provide for balanced growth, but with added focus on our established neighborhoods. The plan also has a strong focus on setting future public infrastructure spending priorities, and these priorities at a very high level are: number one, maintain and replace what we currently have; number two, then enhance what we currently have; and number three, expand our current system of infrastructure and facility assets. The plan essentially advocates for better alignment of future expenditures with available funding and financing sources. This may involve scaling back projects in terms of scope, it may mean deferring projects, or in some cases, even eliminating projects that are currently planned. The plan also contains what we call the Plan Element Section. This is comprised of 10 goals and 46 strategies, and they help set spending priorities across the four major infrastructure categories of transportation, water, sewer and infrastructure, arts, culture, recreation, and public safety. The plan also contains some important updates and new direction with respect to future land use policy direction in the city and the county. The 2035 Urban Growth Areas Map depicts coordinated future urban growth areas for the cities in Sedgwick County as they grow into the unincorporated areas of the county. Now, these areas were identified based on discussions with each city, and the map reflects their anticipated extension of municipal services and growth over the next 20 years. And this map would update the current map, which dates back to May of 2005. The second important map is the 2035 Wichita Future Urban Growth Concept Map. This map represents generalized conceptual guidance to future growth plans and patterns in Wichita over the next 20 years, and you can see that there are really only two growth categories identified. They are the new residential growth areas in the tan color and the new employment growth areas in the dark brown color, and where they overlap is indicated with colored hatching. Now, the purpose of these conceptualized growth areas is to help the city of Wichita better anticipate and plan for public infrastructure and facility spending that will support private sector growth and development. Now, the blue dashed line that you can see on this map, which essentially extends from 29th Street on the north, Pawnee on the south, Rock Road on the east, and Ridge on the west, this encompasses what we, the plan refers to as the established central area of Wichita. And the plan contains an urban infill strategy to help increase the likelihood of accelerated rates of residential urban infill development in this area over the next 20 years. This area also happens to have, have the highest percentage of existing infrastructure in need of replacement and repair. Now, the Wichita Urban Infill Strategy is a key component of the plan. It's intended to facilitate greater levels of infill and redevelopment in Wichita's mature urban area, and it targets infill opportunities according to what we call the area of opportunity and area of stability. Especially significant are four strategies proposed in the plan that are intended to address infill issues and impediments associated with neighborhood concerns, existing regulatory barriers, infrastructure modernization needs, and land assembly and financing issues. The plan also has, under a Plan Implementation Chapter, a three-level infrastructure investment decision-making framework. This is a key part of the plan. It's intended to provide for a more systematic and objective evaluation process to help guide staff and elected officials in making spending decisions in future public infrastructure and facilities. An annual plan monitoring and reporting system is also proposed in the plan, along with some key performance indicators, in order to keep this plan current and relevant as the future changes in a way that may be unanticipated by this plan, so we can do course corrections as required and keep the plan current and relevant to our community. And with that, I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Dave?
No questions.
Commissioner Norton?
Well, not really a question. It's just been a, a long period of time that this has been mashed at, pushed around, looked at, opened back up, and, and looked at by a lot of community members. We've been briefed on it several times, so I don't know that this is a lot of new information for us today. So if we don't have a lot of conversation, it's not because we haven't looked at it, tried to understand the information, visit with not only staff, but citizens have been involved, to move this forward. And I applaud you for the time you've taken to put this together. I know comprehensive plans are not easy. This is like my third iteration of the 1993 plan that I've worked on, and it, it makes it pretty tough to look at your community and try to not only figure out where we're at today, but where you want to be 20 and 30 years from now. It's the old expression, "When do you plant a tree 20 years ago?" If you want shade and you want fruit today, you've got to make plans 20 years ago and put the tree in the ground. And that's what the comprehensive plan is trying to determine. Where do you plant the trees? What kind of trees do you plant? How do you keep them alive for 20 years? And at the end of 20 years, did you plant them too close to the house? Did you plant them over a water line? Is it obstructing some other person's building of their home or whatever? So that's the analogy I use, is that you're trying to figure out where our community's going to be, and that's not always easy. And at the same time, you're trying to figure out where the money comes from to do those projects in the future. So my hat's off to you, Dave, and all staff that tried to work on this, and to the citizen volunteers and electeds that were involved all along the way with trying to figure that out, the future of our community, county-wide, but focusing on not only Wichita, but allowing the cities of the second and third class to weigh in on what they're thinking about their growth potential over the next few years. That's all I have.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to make some general comments in the sense that, to start this out, in terms of the, thank the 22 citizens who were joined with Commissioner Norton and Commissioner Ranza, who were involved in this plan for the get-go and started it several years ago. Also want to publicly thank the citizens who came out because there were a number of public forums that were held where people could see the information that was being developed and also provide input into the process at that time. I struggled with part of this process because I'm kind of a bottom-up type person and looking for ways that things can percolate up as opposed to a centralized, top-down approach. And since we've got this mandate to state, you know, we've got to come up with a comprehensive plan, and to what degree it comes out of Topeka, it comes out of Washington, or some other area or level, it's an area I struggle with because for the average citizen who's busy trying to pay their bills, take care of their family, you know, what's going on and whether it's city government, or school, school board, county government, other local units, the state, the feds, it's, it can get overwhelming very quickly and very easily. So this comprehensive plan is kind of a template. There are a lot of people who've been involved in getting us to this point, and there's some areas where I continue to struggle with the draft that's in front of me, but I wanted to start this off by thanking the folks who have played a very important role over an extended period of time to get us where we are today. And I'd be interested in particularly hearing the comments from the folks who were more directly involved than, than I happen to be, although I will say I did, did attend a couple of the citizen forums, but it, it was a while back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to commend the folks who were involved in the process. Now, you said it started in 2011. That means that this has been a four-year document, and to get to this point is to, the number of man-hours must be very, very high. So thank you for doing a very thorough job, I guess, in, in trying to figure out what to do here. The old plan, you said, was adopted in, the plan we're working on right now was adopted in 1993?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, just so I understand, how is this document actually used? I mean, what's the, what's the point of having this document? Does MAPC feel constrained to use this as a guide when they make decisions? What are we, how is this actually used?
Well, I think it'd be safe to say that the Planning Commission is the entity that most frequently makes reference to this document, as they meet every two weeks, as a commission reviews zoning and plating and other kinds of planning approvals, that they do consult this document to get general policy guidance on certain issues. The governing bodies, city council and the Board of County Commissioners, probably don't use it as, as frequently as perhaps they might, in particularly in regards to capital improvement programming, because the 93 plan was never really set up to provide a lot of emphasis on public infrastructure investment. And that is the intent under the statute, Kansas State statute, is to have the comp plan provide a lot of guidance to public spending decisions on infrastructure. So that's, and the Planning Commission, as they've worked with this document, the 93 document, came to us in the mid-2000s and said, you know, "We probably need a new plan." And it took several years to finally get the momentum to initiate the development of a new plan. And in the late 2000, 2010, 11, the Planning Commission kind of gave us as staff some guidance, saying, "We need a new plan that particularly provides guidance on public infrastructure investment." And then all... And then also, "We need to update some of the land use guidance in the 93 plan that we've done in this plan as well."
Curiously, the plan that was adopted in 1993, what was the term of years? Other words, was that a 20-year plan or 30?
Yes, it was.
A 20-year plan?
Uh-huh. And several amendments were made to it in, I think, 96 and 99, and then we made, I think, a couple of amendments in 2001. We updated a map in 2005, but it was, in essence, a 93 plan with some tweaking.
So MAPC is a joint board between county and the city, and before 1993, was there still a joint board? MAPC, was that still a county-city joint?
Yes, I think that goes back to 1958.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm 85, I'm corrected, yes.
And with that, did they have a joint comprehensive plan before 1993? Or what was it, how was it?
Yes, we did. I, I think it's the early 60s, I think we had a joint city-county.
All right. I think someone said that during the presentation. I may have missed the year. Okay. I am curious, I know we've got some options today to either adopt this or to make changes and potentially send it back to MAPC, being probably the three options before us right now. I am curious, if we were to make a change and then adopt this, does the city of Wichita at that point start with the version that we send out of our board? Or do they start with the version that was passed by MAPC?
Well, right now, they have the version that was submitted and recommended by the MAPC, but they did not take any action back on October 6th. So they have the latitude, I would believe, next week to either adopt the plan as originally submitted by the MAPC, or if they wanted to make changes to it, to reflect perhaps changes that you might consider, then it would take a supermajority vote, as it would yourselves today, to change the plan as recommended by the MAPC.
Answer my question is, if we were to make a change, just theoretically, if that was to happen, does the city of Wichita then consider two different versions, the one that we send out of here, plus the one from MAPC?
I think they would. And obviously, I would be, I'm reporting to them next Tuesday, and I would report to them your actions today, and they would have the option of considering that in their decisions on how to move forward.
If they wanted to adopt, say, we wanted to stay as a joint comprehensive plan, and they wanted to adopt what we approved, let's say they made a change to that document, will we have a chance at that point to reconsider their changes to the document?
Well, that's a question, I think, for your legal staff.
In an effort to adopt a joint plan, I mean, if they make a change to a document, we would, do we have a chance to?
I think you do. I think you have a chance to re-adopt a revised plan.
Okay. So what we do here today, based on what they might do next week, we might have a chance to look at this even again, no matter?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Did the city of Wichita give us any dialogue or reasons as to why they chose to table their action versus?
No, they did not. I can tell you that I think they're generally pleased with the plan, but I think in deference to yourselves, that they wanted to just wait, because the intention was originally to have this go before you last month, and then, so this was deferred to today's meeting. So in light of that, I think they wanted just to defer action, just to make sure that you were comfortable with the planned document as they were, or as they indicated, at least to me, a month ago.
As a document that gives us constraints on, or gives us guidelines on how we do our business, the 1993 plan, do you have any idea about how many pages that document was?
It's quite a lengthy document. It's at least over 100 pages.
Yeah, okay. Just to note, for my colleagues, this document today is only 44 pages long, but there is an appendix. Are we also adopting the appendix today?
That isn't a part of the plan, but it's, yes, you are.
So there are guidelines in the appendix, potentially, that would give us some constraints or some guidelines as to how we conduct our business?
No, the appendix is just data.
Okay.
There's no guidance in that. It's just a collection of data and information. So the only policy element of the plan is contained in the first 44 pages.
All right. I will stop talking for a few minutes and consider what else is to be said here by my colleagues, but I probably have at least one more comment at some point here. I'll just stop for a little while. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dave, let me just clarify for the record and for citizens out there. We have some different options here. We can adopt this recommendation that MAPC has given us, and that would take three votes, a simple majority.
That's correct.
We could vote to modify the plan as they presented, but that would take a supermajority, four votes.
Correct.
Today. Or we could vote to send it back to the MAPC, ask them to make some considerations or consider some things, and that would take three votes.
That's correct.
Okay. Any comments? Commissioner Enru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to express my opinion that I also appreciate the hard work of the staff and the citizens and the stakeholders that worked hard trying to come up with this plan. Four-year process, I think, indicates that they've worked hard and been very diligent. And in their presentations to us, there were opportunities for us to weigh in and make statements. I'm respectful of that work. I think that this comprehensive plan reflects what I believe our citizens want going forward, so I'm willing to be supportive of it. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you're ready for a motion yet, or if we would need more discussion, but I, in light of all the work that's gone into it, between staff and citizens and stakeholders, and the length of time that this has been chewed on and wrung out and worked on to come up, it's something that represents the will of the community and is good plan for the future. I'm willing to adopt it and move forward.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going through the material, one of the things that jumped out at me in the area of transportation was that we were moving and making a serious and significant change to one of the priorities this community's had in place for several decades, moving in terms of freeway enhancements and bypasses, determining that they're a low priority. And of course, in the 1980s, this community passed a countywide sales tax, one cent, with half the money to be used for property tax relief and the other half to be used for road and bridges, with the priority of making Kellogg a freeway. Now, I think arguably, one could say if the city limits of Wichita in 1985 were the city limits of Wichita today, you could say that we had probably met that goal. But the city limits of Wichita are not today what they were in 1985, and Sedgwick County has provided a tremendous amount of tax funds to improving transportation throughout this county and in Wichita. I can think of several intersections that are connected with, that are tied to Kellogg out in my area and the west part of town, that that's been the case. But one of the areas why I struggle with this comprehensive plan in its current form was this would move us away from that commitment that we have in place, and I think it's a commitment that we ought to fulfill. And keep in mind that from economic growth, when, it's been a while, in fact, we're back in the 20th century, when the K-96 Northeast Freeway, which is now the George and Virginia Abloh Expressway portion on K-96, was built, and I think a portion of it's also dedicated to the late Representative Bonnie Huey. When that was built, that helped create, it was a catalyst for a great deal of economic growth and expansion in northeast Wichita. And to preclude that, which I think this plan goes forward and lowers the priority as an area I'm uncomfortable with in its current form, and I thought that we made a commitment to the voters that we ought to keep. I know commitments come and go in the political world, and when I look at Washington in particular, I see that commitments sometimes can change almost as fast as Kansas weather. But having said that, with this comprehensive plan that we're looking at and putting today with the transportation focus here, I have a lot of problems with that portion of the plan, and that would be troubling for me to approve this in its current form, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Well, I'll make a few comments. I was on the committee, at various times throughout there, I, as Dave said, it is Wichita-centric, and I ask the question oftentimes, you know, "Why am I here?" I kind of felt like a lot of the stuff could have been and should have been done more at a city staff level, and so it brings the question, is how useful is this for Sedgwick County? But nevertheless, I have some concerns, as it is currently written as well. I actually have put together a list of suggested changes I would like the MAPC to consider. This is, when I've got them here, I'd like to at least enter this into the record, Madam Clerk. I've actually worked hard to narrow those suggested changes down quite a bit from what I originally had. So my preference would be to send this to the MAPC to consider any suggestions or changes that any commissioner has, if any commissioners have any other concerns. That being said, if I'm in the minority and we vote to pass it, then so be it, but that's where I'm coming from. I just think there's some changes that need to be made, some of them small, some of them bigger and more important, but nevertheless, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Norton?
Well, I'm going to be supportive of moving ahead today. I think plenty of work has been done on this by very smart people that understand our community. One thing I found from being on a city council and being a mayor, we had a comprehensive plan, we reviewed it as a small city, a tornado came along, and then we had to start all over. So comprehensive plans, number one, are living documents. They change, they ebb and flow based on current conditions, current funding, and the mood of the community. So it's going to be subject to review and change and interpretation. Every time we look at it, we open it up. It is a living document that, even as county commissioners, if we see flaws in it, we can move to change them, we can work with the MAPC, the MAPD, and make sure that it meets our needs as a county, but also takes into consideration cities of the second and third class, which are in our districts, and the city of Wichita. It is consistently reviewed. I know the 1993 plan, as mayor, I was part of the review in '97, and then as a commissioner in 2001, I was on the review committee and several other iterations. So it's constantly reviewed for where the community's growing that we didn't expect. Things happen. I think if 20 years ago, you'd said Derby is going to be the size it is today with its growth potential, a lot of people said, "No, that's a small town. It's, you know, it's just along K-15." You go look at Rock Road right now, it is comparable to Rock Road North in many respects. So things change, and we have to be willing to understand that this is not a static, but a very dynamic document that tries to guide us, serves as a template. The other thing I worry about is that perfect is the enemy of great. You know, you can spend, we could spend another five years hashing at this, saying that we want to get it exactly perfect for everybody's ideas in the community. But along the way, we have to get along with developing our community, making decisions, spending money wisely, and understanding where we want to go. So I don't want to keep hashing at this until we think we get it absolutely perfect for everybody out there that wants to have some input. You'll never get there. And finally, anything written in this document does not handcuff the commission for future decisions on spending of money on infrastructure, how the community grows. We still are autonomous as far as making those decisions. They will still work their way through the process of going to an appointed board, going through a staff-level review, and coming to the elected bodies for final decisions. So it's not a reference to the document, and we never see it again. That's just a guidance to start out with. So I'm ready to move forward today. I don't know if Commissioner Enru is ready to make a motion, but I would certainly support that, to accept the hard work that's been done, and this is a starting point for us to start thinking about where our community goes in the next 20 to 30 years. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did not know that Commissioner Peter John would make those comments regarding the sales tax, and I appreciate his comments, and I think he's right on. In fact, I have also, just in the last few minutes, looked at the handout that Commissioner Randzow, you handed out for some changes that should be considered. And as I'm reading that right now, again, I've not seen this before, this opportunity, I did not know what you had in mind, but as I'm reading this, I think that you're making some reasonably good points. And so I would like to suggest that we would send this back to MAPC to consider the changes that you're suggesting, and I have one, I actually prepared, I was going to give this out, I'll give this to the clerk. Let me go ahead and read this. My comment would be, my comment would be, I think we need to include this, a statement like this, maybe this isn't exactly worded right, but this is the way I'd like to see it, and there's a statement I prepared that basically, I think, is missing from the document. And I'll read this. It says, "In 1985, Sedgwick County voters approved a countywide one-cent sales tax to help maintain or construct road projects, as well as reduce property tax. The one-cent sales tax revenue distribution formula is determined by statute and is based on local jurisdiction property tax mill levy rates, as well as population. It is imperative that this revenue stream remain and that it continue to be distributed as it has been since 1985. Sedgwick County funds portions of the Kellogg Improvement Project among other road projects, but also funds agencies and services to the benefit of all Sedgwick County citizens." And there's two natural places for this to go in the document. I'd like to see it on page three, under the heading, Setting Our Public Infrastructure Investment Priorities, and then also on page 39, under the heading, Infrastructure Investment Decision-Making Framework. Now, this is not a motion in and of itself, but I would like this language to be submitted for the record, for MAPC to consider, considering adopting something like that. Maybe that's not exactly what they would say, but something to that effect, I think, does belong in the document, to establish the history of this revenue stream and what it's intended for, and how important it is to the county. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, we would send this back to MAPC.
I'll second that.
Do you want to expound on your motion just a little bit?
Well, MAPC to consider the language that I have submitted as a consideration, as well as the document that you handed out a few minutes ago with suggested changes. Have them consider adopting those ideas or whatever they feel is appropriate.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that. Wanted to kind of comment at an appropriate time, but I did want to get a second for Commissioner Hal's motion.
Okay. And so we have a motion and a second. I would just say that if any commissioners have any thoughts or suggestions for MAPC, I would support sending their comments back as well, not just mine. I would ask, I would support any commissioner having comments in that regard.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to hasten to add, one cent doesn't sound like much, but the one-cent countywide sales tax generates approximately $100 million a year. And even though that's described as a countywide sales tax, and Sedgwick County's involved in initially receiving it, the cities in this county actually are the ones who get to spend most of it, of over $70 million, maybe even approaching $75 million, somewhere in that range, goes to the municipalities for spending, and with roads and bridges focused as a priority. Now, of course, the challenge there has been, while Kellogg has been the primary focus, and I will say, you know, there've been comments about how relationships are between the county and the city, but I'll commend my colleagues across, selected colleagues across the street, because I think the city of Wichita, up to this point, has done a very good job in terms of spending their share of this countywide sales tax, which I think somewhere between $55 and $60 million a year, on Kellogg improvements, and there've been a lot of them. And you can see them if you're driving basically from the East Turnpike exit along Kellogg west to, west to 111th Street. So I think it's very important that this document reflect the history here, and in its current form it doesn't, which is one of the reasons why I was uncomfortable with it in its current form, and would like to see it modified, would like to see MAPC take another shot at it. I don't think there's any way, we'd probably come up with a supermajority here, but I think it's an important public discussion in terms of, do we continue trying to make Kellogg a freeway? I don't think there's any way, we'd probably come up with a supermajority here, but, but I think it's an important public discussion in terms of, do we continue trying to make Kellogg a freeway from the east side of Wichita to the west side of Wichita, from Colwich Road, 167th Street West, on the west side of town, where it runs into the city of Goddard, all the way east over to K-96, and potentially, depending upon where the city annexations stop, or even a little further east before it runs into Andover? I think that's an important public discussion, and if we're really making a plan for the future, and talking about the future, I think that's important to have. And we can talk about the fact that this is a living document, and it can be revised and changed, and I would hope so. I would hate to think that we're straightjacketing ourselves. But if we don't appreciate what we've had in place for three decades, for roughly three decades, and we're going to make it a change, this is a very significant public policy template that we're working with here. And I think it's important to have language. I'm not completely comfortable with what Commissioner Howell has, has drafted here, but I think something like this needs to be included as part of this plan, and, and that's why I would be supportive of a motion to send this back to the MAPC. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess I'd like to ask the rest of the commissioners if there's any, are there any other commissioners have any, any suggested changes or consideration for the MAPC that they'd like to go forward? I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure, giving everybody the opportunity. Commissioner Peter John?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's anyone here who is part of the citizen portion of the planning for the...
Yes, there is.
But if there are, okay. Sorry, it's at least, I think it'd be important also to allow citizen input too, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if there's anyone from the community that'd like to speak on this issue, we'll allow that. If not, that's okay.
I think I would just like to say, we did put a lot of...
Could you go to the... Please give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Cindy Miles. My address is 1506 East 59th Street South, Wichita, Kansas 67216. And I'd just like to say, we did put a lot of effort and work into this, creating this document. And when we talk about, when we talked about priorities for this document, we, there was a lot of conversation about priorities. And bottom line is, everything can't be the highest priority. We had to decide what was going to be priority and what wasn't going to be priority. And it wasn't that transportation wasn't important to us, but as we saw the growth of the city and, and some of the, and the county, and some of the things that we had, we've done over the years, we just didn't envision that there was a lot of opportunities to build more new freeways, other than just expand on what we currently had. But, but anyways, I just wanted to say, we have, we did gain a lot of community input, and I think that the result is a document that was created with a lot of, a lot of opinions. And as Tim said, you're right, it's not going to, it's not going to be a perfect document. We could work forever trying to create a perfect document. Anyways, I'd like to see us hopefully move forward on adopting this very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu, Wichita. For me, this was an interesting citizen process. I wasn't on the committee, but I would attend the meetings where people would give their input and stuff. And one of the surprises I heard was to not keep expanding our highways and stuff, to kind of infill and take care of what we've got. I never got the idea that it meant not enhancing and improving Kellogg. I thought it just meant, you know, the, instead of trying to extend out all of our infrastructure, let's take care of what we've got and protect it. So I'm surprised, I didn't know that this document meant no further Kellogg expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. Anyone else from the public would like to speak?
My name is Charles Peaster, and I live at 9453 North 135th Street West, Centaur, Kansas. I attended several of these meetings also. And the funny part about it was, they had pins they were sticking in the map, and they decided one time they had too many pins there, so they moved them. Now, I heard this morning that the MAPC approved this. What was the vote? Was it unanimous? Or was there part of the people on the MAPC that didn't approve this particular comprehensive plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Dave, could you answer that question? Do you know what the vote was?
Yes, I do. It was unanimous. We'll see. We do have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I appreciate the mechanism whereby we keep the conversation going, and we can consider the recommendations by commissioners. And I am fully supportive of those sort of compromise actions. However, I feel strongly enough that we should approve that this plan and the hard work of our citizens and departments and staff, that I won't support the motion, although I will acknowledge that it's a pretty good compromise in the situation we're in. That's all I have.
Mr. Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, I guess, make a statement. That is, sending this back to MAPC is not killing this document. It is just giving them a chance to, to consider some of our thoughts on, at this, at this level. I think the document overall is a, is a pretty good document, but I do think there's some, some points we'd like to have them consider. So this is not something that's going to set it back for a year, or set it back for, for six months. I think they can, they can, in the next couple of meetings at MAPC, take these comments and, and review this document and make some considerations, whether they would like to adopt those suggested, suggested changes or, or not. And so this is just a, a, a small delay in the overall process, and I think it's worthwhile for us to go ahead and do this. It's worth the time to do it right. And, you know, if we add a couple of weeks to the process, that's okay. We have a document that we might like actually a lot better, and actually has more usefulness to us. And so it's worth taking a couple of time, a couple of weeks if we need to, to, to have that consideration. So again, I stand by the, the motion to send this back across the street.
And I'll say, yeah, I agree. We'll never get a perfect document, but I would argue that even with these suggested changes, it won't be perfect. This is an important document. We talk a lot about this is supposed to be used as a guide and not the Bible. We've, we've talked about it in the meetings, and we've talked about it here, and that's true. But the thing is, though, some people will, in the future, attempt to use it as a Bible and say, we have to do this because it's in here, or we can't do something because it's not in here. So I think we may need to make an honest effort to get it as, get it done as, as best we can for that reason. I mean, we put a lot of time and effort into it, and there's no need to rush it through. Let's, let's, let's look, look at these suggested changes. I've given some of my own suggested changes, and I'll support any commissioner that has other concerns, having their suggestion considered. That being said, I'm, I'm not really interested in making this particular, turning this issue into a debate about the sales tax. I would like my suggested changes to be considered, however. So I'll be supportive of this motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Randzau?
Aye. Motion passes three to two. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item H, consideration of grant in the amount of $916,079 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Shelter Plus Care Housing Program.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, your Health and Human Services Director. Before you today is a grant application for a housing program that is part of the larger community response to the HUD Notice of Funding Availability Process. This is a renewal application for the Shelter Plus Care Funds, which are funds that are targeted to three specific homeless populations, those experiencing a severe mental illness, persons with substance use disorder, or persons with HIV/AIDS. The Division partners with three different referring agencies, Calm Care of Centaur County, Miracles, Inc., and Positive Directions. And those three organizations will be responsible for the referrals, for the housing vouchers, and for providing the care component of Shelter Plus Care through case management services for those receiving housing vouchers. The goal of the program is to provide the participants with safe and adequate housing, while working on the skills to increase their income and self-sufficiency. The long-term goal for participants is to successfully address any barriers that contribute to their homelessness, and to graduate to some other type of self-directed housing. For 2014 and 2015, about 35% of all exits from, of program participants have met that larger goal, which is very significant considering the barriers that individuals in this program face. While the typical program participant is a single adult household, this program also allows for families to participate. Program guidelines are consistent with fair housing guidelines, and are generally based on bedroom occupancy, with one bedroom assigned for every two household members. For example, a household of eight, two adults, and six children would qualify for a four-bedroom voucher. The income guidelines for this program are similar to many other federal programs, and they'll limit, they limit program participant income to less than 185% of the federal poverty level, based on household size. For example, a household of three would need to have an annual income of less than $37,166 to be eligible. For those with an income, it is a program expectation that they pay up to 30% of that income towards their rent. The grant request is of $916,079, represents 112 housing vouchers at fair market rent as determined by HUD, and also supports the administrative fees that fund one position that works with the applicants, and tenants, landlords, and case managers from the participating programs. For 2015, of those currently housed, 50% of the referrals came from Calm Care, 35% from Miracles, and 15% from Positive Directions. The Shelter Plus Care component is the largest portion of the community grant application, representing about 38% of the total request. Today, I'd also like to recognize Dr. Luelah Sanders with United Way, the lead applicant for this community grant application. Also with us today are program staff Maggie Flanders and Krista Sampa-Murthy. I'd like to describe two different success stories of individuals that have participated in this program. We have had a household that was able to reintegrate the spouse into the home with his children and his wife following incarceration. At this point in time, both adults are participating in treatment, and they are working. And we've also got another story around reintegration. Reintegration for, of children has been possible with 60% of the women who entered the program with a reintegration plan since program transfer. Reintegration is possible because safe, affordable, and stable, stable housing allows that family to, to focus on the other things that they deal with as a family, rather than worry about where they're going to spend each night. So it's a very valuable program to the community. I'd recommend your approval of the application for the grant. Authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents, including the grant award, and any, make any necessary budget adjustments. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the briefing that you provided, provided me prior to this. Let me repeat in public a question I threw out to you in private. Since this is a renewal of an existing grant, are there any new mandates or requirements coming out of the federal agency that's providing this grant that would be different going forward than we've had in the past?
No, there are no new expectations, and in fact, the, the program expectations have been very stable for the past few years as well.
Wanted to get that on the record. Thank you. Second question, can you talk to him a little bit about, in terms of just, how, how are we doing overall? Because I know there's a census that's taken each spring, or I should say, in late winter, in mid-winter, in terms of the homeless population here in, in the county. And this is a, not only a national problem, it's an international problem, and I see it around the world every day. So how are we doing?
Well, I'd like to say that we're holding our own. The most recent count that we've had was pretty flat compared to prior years. And one of the advantages that we've seen with this program is that we, in the last couple of years, we've been able to increase participation levels up around 90%. So those vouchers are actively in use, and so that helps take somewhere between 95 and 112 folks off of the streets. And one of the other advantages to this particular program is that it does serve families in addition to individuals. Many of the programs that are available for homelessness are focused on individuals, and this program will allow for families to participate as well. And so it really does make a big impact in addressing that homelessness issue that we face in the community like any large community does.
Thank you.
Commissioner Norton?
I don't know that I have any questions, because I've been intimately involved with this through the United Way and through the Homeless Coalition for many years. You know, we have to realize that there's many components of trying to solve the homeless issue. There's the chronic homeless, which is described by the feds as a, a certain population that we've worked really diligently on. And I know Shelter Plus is a, a add-on that tries to solve the chronic homeless issue. Then there's the new homeless, many times that are families, that are following in there because of social economic conditions or whatever. And then another area that really concerns me now is school-aged homeless. The, the young people that, that don't have a, a housing unit that they call home, that they're couch surfing, they're living with relatives, they really don't have a home. And, and they end up becoming the new homeless. So there's a whole population out there that is segmented that we're trying to solve all at the same time. Shelter Plus really focuses on chronic homelessness. And one of the things that's worried me in that chronic homeless population is that a large percentage of them are ex-military or veterans. And I know we've worked with the Veterans Administration, and Calm Care, mental health, and some of the drug agencies, because many of them are dual-diagnosed, they have multiple problems. Homelessness is just a, a final symptom of all the other things that they have issues with. So I'm going to be very supportive of this today. It ties in with the supernova that has just gone through its opening up and looking at and, and being put, I think it was, went through the United Way here just recently. And I, I think that's ready to be moved forward. So all of this ties together, and to start delineating and, and, and taking any of the parts of it that we've worked on for many years, and minimizing them is not going to work for the system, because we've worked real hard to create the system. So I will be supportive of this today. I think it's critically important to the overall look of trying to solve not only just the chronic homeless, but all the other maladies that tied to homelessness in our community. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I'm trying to remember what we talked about in my office, when you came to visit me about this, about this grant. If, in the past, we've not used all of the money on this grant, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what happens with that money that's not used?
That money is actually, it's a, it's a drawdown process, and so that money is not drawn down, and so it's not expended in, in a given year. The way the application process works is they determine a number of vouchers or slots for a community, and then they fully fund that amount in the event, to make sure that if all of those vouchers are in use all 12 months in that, in that period, grant period of time, and there's no participating income from the, the tenants, they want to make sure that a community has enough money to fully fund those, all of those slots. In many instances, we have participants who have an income, and so they participate. So we don't spend the full HUD voucher, the, the program participant is paying part of that rent. And then there are always going to be churn, where people are, a tenant may move out and someone else moves in a month later. So the full amount is very rarely going to be expended because of those sorts of things. And so we don't draw that money down.
Is the money then also provided to other communities that might have a greater need than they anticipated?
There are, there is a process to make that happen. And in fact, in this grant application, we have, it's actually three different grant applications. It's the main, main application for 102 vouchers. And then over the years, there have been two different opportunities for the community to apply for additional or bonus funding. And that bonus funding generally comes from another community who's determined that they don't need that anymore.
Okay.
This is a competitive application each year, and so that's how the, the allocation happens across the country.
Compared to, compared to previous years, how does this grant amount compare?
This is about $20,000 less than last This is about twenty thousand dollars less than last year's request in part because of the fair market rate number that HUD assigns to our community.
Okay. I just wanted to say, you know, again, we get criticized for sometimes being, people I guess think we're cold and calloused, we don't care about our community. And I don't think that's true at all, but we want to make sure what government does is effective and efficient. And I believe this is a necessary grant. So I would like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we would approve the application for the grant. If awarded, approve the acceptance of the grant and authorize the chairman or his designated to sign all necessary grant documents and establish additional budget authority as provided in the financial considerations sections of this request.
Second. We have a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Next item, please.
Item I, Amendment to the 2016 Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners David Spears, Director of Public Works. In Item I, we're requesting that you take action on two items concerning our ongoing partnership with KDOT to purchase right-of-way for the future construction of the K-254 highway around northwest Wichita, which is locally known as the Northwest Bypass. In 2010, we entered into a five-year partnership agreement with KDOT, Goddard, Mays to set aside funds that can be used for opportunity purchases or hardship purchases of right-of-way. During the life of the original contract, KDOT matched every local dollar with two state dollars. KDOT has asked that we extend the partnership another five years. Due to their funding constraints, KDOT's match for the next five years will be one-to-one. The county contribution would continue at three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars per year from 2016 to 2020. The 2016 budget and CIP were both developed before it was clear that KDOT wanted to continue the partnership. Funding for this project was not identified in the 2016 budget and CIP. In order to move forward with the agreement, you will need to amend the 2016 budget and CIP to include our three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar match. During development of the budget, you created a Roads and Bridges Reserve Fund within the budget that is to be used to fund projects that you select. Last month, you approved a CIP amendment and selected projects totaling two-million-eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for funding from the Roads and Bridges Reserve Fund. That left a remaining balance of four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. We propose that you allocate three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand from the remaining funds to this project in 2016. We recommend that you approve the CIP amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. Stand for any questions.
Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be happy to make the motion at appropriate time. You mentioned a number of cities and let's see, the State Department of Transportation's involved. If we approve this, obviously Sedgwick County is going to be involved. The city of Goddard and the city of Mays are also involved.
Correct.
But the city of Wichita is not involved.
They are not.
Okay. Well, I think that's significant to get on the record, particularly in light of our earlier discussions in terms of what sort of a plan we have planning for the future. Let me ask you, we're basically acquiring properties with this money so that we're just getting right-of-way at this point in time and we still have a lot of right-of-way that yet to be acquired. Do you have any sort of an estimate in terms of how much right-of-way has already been acquired on this project and how many, how much has yet to be acquired?
About a third of the right-of-way has been acquired, seventeen million dollars. There's fifty-one million total to acquire. Now that's as of appraisal values, recent appraisal values. You don't know, they may go up in the future. We also have a protective overlay zone. We're the only ones to do this in the state over the entire proposed alignment. That means if somebody comes in to plat or somebody wants to build, we're made aware of that by the code enforcement or building folks. They come and see us, we call KDOT. KDOT notifies the owner that, hey, there's going to be a highway coming through here. Instead of building your house, we'd like to buy the right-of-way. And they negotiate with them to do that, which is cheaper to buy the land now than buy the house later. And it's really a good way to do it because this is a long-term project.
Well, I, you know, we had some comments earlier today about planning, you know, planning twenty years in advance for what it is. I don't know whether I'll be fortunate enough since I've outlived the average age of both my parents at this point in time if I'll ever see this road in place. But I think it's an important project, it's a necessary project. It would be, I think, very stimulative for economic development in Sedgwick County if we can have this project take place. But I do know that it's a heck of a lot cheaper to acquire the right-of-ways now than if, I know other local units have had to do. One of the expenses of Kellogg has been often, they've had to acquire a right-of-way in areas that have already been developed and it's very, 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 very expensive. And I think being proactive in this regard is positive. And so I do plan to be supportive of this effort, Mr. Chairman, and the firm knowledge, though, that this is only going to move the ball in this direction a very small amount.
Thank you.
So Dave, let me clarify. You said this wasn't originally included in the budget, but because of this commission's foresight in developing the budget with respect to roads and bridges, we're able to accommodate this important project and pay cash for it. Is that correct?
Right. We deleted the one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street project, which was over a million dollars. And then we were also cut by about seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, so that left a remaining balance in there that we could spend on this.
If we had cut more as some proposed, then we would not be able to do this project. Thank you. We don't have a motion, do we?
We do not, Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I'm ready to make that motion at this point in time that we approved the CIP amendment and authorized the chairman to sign the document or the agreement.
Second. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item J, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Rick Durham, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer. And at the end of each quarter, the Finance Division produces a report that identifies the county's financial health. I am going to back this up a couple of slides here. There we go. This document has been delivered to you and it will be placed on the county's website. At this time, I want to provide you some highlights of this report. Of course, as always, this report is developed and prepared by the staffs of the Accounting Division led by Sarah Jantsch and the Budget Division led by Lindsey Poore So. So let's begin with the end, if we will. And by the end is, this is year-end projections by fund type. So beginning, I'm going to go column by column here. So on the left, we start with the General Fund. And that's the county's primary operating fund and it accounts for the county services that don't have a designated fund of their own. This includes most general government and law enforcement functions and it's the operation of forty-two departments funded from the General Fund. Expenditures are estimated to exceed revenues by one-point-five million at year-end and a large portion of that is due to the five-point-three million for the zoo project. So as we move to the right, debt service funds, revenues from debt service funds are estimated to be one-point-eight million greater than expenditures. Then we move into other county tax funds, those special revenue funds, property tax-supported. The county has seven other property tax-supported funds, including bond and interest, EMS, Calm Care, Aging, Highway, Noxious Weeds and WSU. Each fund provides services related to a specific function and the property taxes levied in each are used only to support those specific functions. These funds are expected to have a net decrease of approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand by year-end. Other non-tax funds, the county has thirty-one budgeted other operating funds that are not supported directly with property tax funds. These funds are estimated to decrease by seven-hundred-thousand in combined fund balance by the end of the year. And then the Fire District, the fund balance is projected to decrease approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand by the end of the year, largely related to anticipated increase in personnel costs for County tax-supported funds, this is the General Fund plus all other property tax-supported funds. Year-to-date revenues totaled two-hundred-and-five-point-eight million dollars for county property tax-supported funds. Of course, this excludes the Fire District. Okay, this represents an increase of three-point-one million or one-and-a-half percent compared to the third quarter of the previous fiscal year. Year-to-date expenditures totaled one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-point-six million for county property tax-supported funds. This increase of seven-point-three million dollars is seven-point-three million dollars as compared to last fiscal year. Again, the increase is primarily due to the one-time payment to the zoo. Additionally, more cash-funded capital improvement projects totaled two-point-one million dollars were approved in the 2015 budget as compared to 2014. So as we look at the revenues and expenditures in this format here, revenues increased one-point-five percent while expenditures increased four-point-three percent. If we were to take the zoo portion out of that, the five-point-three million, the revenues would have increased, or excuse me, I guess that would have been expenditures would have been a one-point-two percent. So the net, the net income on a budgetary basis is twenty-seven-point-two million dollars. Staying with the county property tax-supported funds, here are some revenue highlights. The top four revenues listed here, as you recall, revenues had increased three-point-one million dollars from the same period last year. The top four revenues listed here, as you see, ad valorem taxes, sales and use taxes, motor vehicle taxes and insurance fees account for four-point-four-four million of those increases alone. And of course, those are offset by reductions in Medicare fees, mortgage registration fees Personnel represents the largest single category of expenses that we incur. So here, the most significant increases as we break down, a breakdown of those expenditures of personnel costs, salaries and wages is a two-point-five percent increase, but the largest increase has occurred in retirement contributions and overtime costs. And of course, retirement contributions is a direct result of what Capers is trying Key non-personnel expenditures in the county property tax-supported funds are listed here. The largest, the largest increase is on the top line, the grant awards. Again, that is a direct reflection of the five-point-three million dollars for the zoo. As I stated at the beginning of the presentation, the county has thirty-one budgeted operating funds which are not supported directly with property taxes. Here, we're going to talk about those now. So they include grants, enterprise and internal service funds. So year-to-date revenues total fifty-seven-point-three million dollars, a decrease of one-point-five million dollars from the same period of last year. Year-to-date expenditures at the end of the third quarter in the non-tax funds, fifty-eight-point-seven million or one-point-two million more than a year earlier. So the most significant decrease recorded in the reimbursements revenue group primarily due to the manner in which we receive payment for the Affordable Airfares program. So if you'll recall, and let me jump ahead here to the specifics of that, we look at the revenues. So if you'll recall, the two-point-five percent decrease in revenue, so the agreement we have with the state is that we receive ninety percent at the beginning of the state fiscal year and then the remaining ten percent at the end of the state fiscal year. So because our fiscal years don't match up, that's representative of the large decrease that we see, the ninety percent decrease. So we've received only ten percent. Here are the breakdown of the non-tax fund expenditures. And again, as we see, salaries and wages is our largest single source of expenditures. So now we turn back to the General Fund, but now we look at the fund in a manner similar to a private sector business does, based on a GAAP basis. And what this chart shows is the total fund balance and it shows a clear pattern that the General Fund balance follows. So the third quarter, identified by the red notations on this slide, show a very narrow range over the past six years and that quarterly, that total fund balance of ninety-three million dollars. But you can follow the pattern over the past six fiscal years. Staying in the General Fund, the county has a fund balance policy that states that unrestricted general fund balance be at least twenty percent of budgeted expenditures. Not unlike the previous slide, you can follow a clear pattern of the third quarter being identified in red again, that the county maintains a fairly narrow range and is above the established policy of twenty percent. We'll shift gears here. Brandy Bailey is responsible for managing the county's investment portfolio. The total investment portfolio at the end of the quarter is two-hundred-and-one million dollars and the yield to maturity is at point-six-nine percent. So the benchmark for the investment portfolio is the one-year Treasury bill rate, which is currently at point-two-five percent. So considering the current investment climate, I'd say Brandy does a pretty good job with Here we have listed significant capital projects and these are going to be different than some of the ones that you've seen in the past and we've kind of shown the same projects quarter after quarter after quarter. So what we did was we looked and reviewed some and we're showing completed projects this time. So the Jailmaster Control, completed. Hundred-and-thirty-fifth Street West, completed October twenty-third. The Hundred-and-fifty-ninth Street East, the Turnpike Bridge to Twenty-first Street North, will be completed this year. Of course, prevention maintenance on selected roads, all completed. Maple Street, completed August tenth. And then, of course, the bridge, the Mount Hope Bridge was completed and that is all done except for seeding. Okay, we're going to move away from some specific county financial data and we'll look at key metrics for the county and the trend. Again, this, the next several slides are same data that we've seen before because it's annualized data, but it measures the county's fiscal health. So if we look, we're talking about liquidity, which is a number of days' cash on hand, our flexibility, and that's the unrestricted balance as a percentage of our expenditures, our property value, our debt burden and our reliance on property taxes. our property value, our debt burden, and our reliance on property taxes. These are the same measures from the previous slide, except what we do here is that we compare Sedgwick County's information to benchmark counties. Those benchmark counties are from a database that is provided to us from GFOA, and then we extract corresponding financial information for the counties that have, that, one, received the award for excellence in financial reporting, which means that they are providing financial information in the same way that we are, so we have confidence that we're comparing apples to apples. And then, two, the population of those counties is between 250,000 and 750,000, so that corresponds with Sedgwick County's population. So as we compare to the benchmark counties, those similar in size and who are reporting financial data in the same way, we actually fare better than those benchmark counties in all but two categories. Property value, which is taxable value per capita, which is, which is a constant, it's the same each quarter. And then our debt burden, which is 14%, now this is 14% as of 2014, and our benchmark This slide is from data that's received or derived from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State, and they compile the leading economic indicators to provide insight into the state of the Wichita economy. So what I've done is that circle represents a 20-month average of January of '14 through August of 2015, and that average for that 20-month period is 94.59. That's the, that's the measure that, of the leading economic indicators. So that average was 94.59. Current is 94.1, which means there's a range of, the high is 95.4 and the low being 93.7. So there's a very slight variance, it's just 1.7 points. So I think what is important to notice is, is that while it shows quite a wide variance, I think it is in relative because of the axis on the chart. So if we were to narrow that down, you would see that that's actually a very narrow range, so it's almost flat. Staying with the economy, again, annual data that you've seen before, tax-based growth, home sales, new home permits, all up or positive trend. Sales and use tax, also a positive trend, and the unemployment rate is lower than in previous years, also a positive trend. Only the number of mortgages registered shows a downward trend. So if we look at a short-term trend, we see that half of our measures show positive and half of our measures now show not a positive trend. So home sales increased, and these are comparing the third quarter of '15 to the third quarter of '14. So what does it all mean? Here are some of the threats that we see that are potential threats to Sedgwick County's fiscal position. State programs, of course, looking to fill funds, looking for local funds to fill the gap, and a couple of examples there. The state budget, of course, they're projecting deficits, the state legislation and moves they may make in the future, and of course, the local economy, the aircraft industry obviously being sluggish, but then there's modest growth of property sales and new home Key points. Our expenditures outpace revenue by 2.8 in the county property tax-supported funds, largely due to a one-time payment to the zoo and more cash-funded capital improvement projects. The general fund deficit projected for 20, there is a deficit projected for 2015, but it is less than originally forecasted due to one-time revenues. And we're talking about the sale of the furly land primarily. Sedgwick County continues to be smaller, more focused. The local economy continues to recover slowly. Aviation job cuts are offset by increases in other sectors, and we still consider the greatest risk to the fiscal health of the county is from the state. And I am missing a slide, so I guess with that, I'll conclude and wrap it up and say that, that through the third quarter, our financial performance is consistent with expectations. We have used fund balance in tax and non-tax funds. Our fundamentals continue to reflect strong financial position, and that's as evidenced as the AAA ratings that we just received from S&amp;P and Moody's in our latest refunding. And then, of course, we do have deficits projected beginning this fiscal year. So with that, I would stand to answer any questions, and if not, if there are no questions, I would ask that you receive and file.
Mr. Peter John.
Yes, I appreciate some of the points in terms of potential threats, but one that you didn't mention that I think is serious and ongoing and one that's been in place for quite a while is the war on savers from the Federal Reserve banks, and basically their zero interest rates. Could you talk for a minute in terms of where we are, because both Sedgwick County earns interest on money before it often gets distributed to other local units as part of the property tax statutes the state has established, but also in terms of how that's affected, you know, we benefit in the sense if, if the Federal Reserve drives down interest rates when we're going to market to borrow money. So it's a two-edged sword, and I want to know this morning, if you can, spend a minute, please, talk about how it's cutting, how that sword's cutting this morning, please.
I don't know that I want to comment on what the Federal Reserve does as far as the movement of interest rates, but you're right, it is, is a two-edged sword, just as all of us, because as we, as we use debt, obviously, the lower the Fed rate is, is the better, the, the more opportunity or the better it is for us to borrow money, just like it would be for anyone. But when you're investing money, then, then there's the other side of the blade or the other side of the sword, as you say, is that there's no return. So it would be no different in the county than it would be any other business that is looking to have an investment portfolio for income. Conversely, it is cheap to borrow money, so therein lies the balance is how much do you invest, how much do you borrow? Right now, money is cheap. We all know that.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking in terms of the two ends of it, because we, you know, hadn't, we borrowed, I think, around $11 million just to, earlier, just with, a couple of weeks ago, and, and we struggled in terms of, you know, what's the right amount to borrow and how that leaves our balances in terms of, but in terms of the flip side of it, in terms of when we're measuring our interest rate income that we're receiving off the money in basis points, not in percentages. It's, it's a serious aspect. Another potential threat, I think I'd be remiss if we didn't consider and throw out, I mean, there's a lot of focus here on what the state may or may not do. Federal government, I think, is in the same category, and I think they're a much bigger threat, both in the short term and in the long term in terms of, for the health, the economic health of this community, which leads to the economic health of Sedgwick County, because we're dependent upon the strength of the private sector out there, and if, if we have, we've got regulatory uncertainty, which I think is a massive problem coming out of Washington, I think that is a huge potential threat that faces challenges for us, and, and so I, I'm very appreciative of this report, but I did want to throw out a couple of things, at least on my system of potential threats to Sedgwick County that I think need to be included and need to be considered, because we've got manipulation of interest rates, whether we're talking short-term, long-term, or anywhere in between, and we have new edicts, rules, regulations, whatever you want to call it, bureaucratic mandates, that we have to jump through hoops to perform with. That's going to make, I think, not only our county jobs more difficult, but I think for other local units and, and the state more difficult, and these are also coming down onto the private sector too, and, and the uncertainty that's out there, I think, is significant, and I think it's showing in the fact that, if you look at some of these economic trends, it's, it's definitely a mixed picture, but it's, I, you did an excellent job, Rick, in presenting it, and, and I wanted to put that on the record, and at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion and we receive and file.
Go ahead.
I just made it.
I'll second that. And I'll just add that I agree with the comments of my fellow commissioner. Every time we have one of these, we're always told that the greatest risk to county fiscal health is the state, and I'll continue to disagree with that. I think our greatest risk to our fiscal health is the federal government and our current economy, our new economy, and our willingness to, to deal with that new reality. That is the greatest risk to our fiscal health. The state is suffering from the same poor economy, much of which is being driven by bad policy at the federal government, and it's having an effect on us, it's having an effect, as Commissioner Peter John said, on the private sector. We're feeling those effects, and we must be realistic and be willing to deal with, with that reality. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You make one comment that Sedgwick County continues to be smaller and more focused. Can you qualify that? What, what are we referring to when you say that Sedgwick County is smaller and more focused? What do you mean by that?
If we go back to 2012, should I go back? When, and Lindsey's pointing me to the executive summary page is what she's saying, and, and what it says is, if we go back to 2012, the county eliminated 10.3 million in expenditures, 7.3 million in '13, and then in '14, an additional reduction of expenditures of $2.7 million. So that's what we're talking about when we talk about smaller.
Okay. One of the comments that's made on here says deficits projected beginning this fiscal year. I understand the deficit in 2015 because of decisions that were made regarding the zoo, but what, what, can you, can you project the deficits out into future years a little bit for me?
That, I'm referring to this slide, of course, because what this is, is year-end projections. This is only for this fiscal year, but I know that there are projections, they're not in this book, are they?
Yeah, they'll be in the adopted budget.
But they'll be in, in the adopted budget that will be coming up very shortly, that will do projections out through 2020.
And in what year do we see deficits really becoming concerning to you? What, what, what is the, I remember seeing, I think, 2018 is when I think I saw a deficit in that projection. Is that, is that about right? So we, we need to do some corrections at some point. We still have things to work on, I guess.
Yes.
We're not on, we're not on cruise here, we've got things to fix, all right?
Yes.
That's the point I'm making. I guess I would agree with my colleagues, I, this is my, I think, my fourth fiscal report that I've heard, and I would agree, I actually wrote down some notes regarding the greatest, greatest risk to county fiscal health as opposed by the state. I would also disagree with that. I'm just thinking about Obamacare and the healthcare costs that are happening in this nation that's impacting our county, I think, in a dramatic way. And second of all, the unsustainable dependency that they create and also hand off to locals. I, I think that there's a risk there that, they're well-intentioned, but in, in the end of the day, if they can't sustain those programs that they create, that's, that's something that's going to be something we'll have to deal with at some point. So I would agree, I think the biggest threat to our, our, our fiscal health is, is probably not the state, but it is the federal government, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick, I'm, I'm going to get in the, get out my green eye shade and got a timing question for you, and if there's anyone, Sarah Lindsey, who wants to jump in, please feel free to do so. Here's, here's my timing question. Last year, the commission, towards the end of the year in December, approved the purchase of the Third Street Building, 271 Building, rough cost about $5 million, and, but we actually closed on that building this year, so the money came out of that. Now, just a couple of weeks ago, we went to the market to borrow 5 million. Will that 5 million that we, that were part of the 11 million that we package of borrowing, will that 11 million, is that included in these numbers so that that transaction kind of balances out for our 2015 year? Or is there a timing issue in terms of when that, when that, when that money will arrive? And could that be impacting these numbers the way you described the 5.3 million expenditure for the zoo and the elephants out there? That one-time expenditure had an impact on these numbers?
It, it's all encompassed in the capital improvement plan.
So.
It's not.
It's not part of these numbers. Okay, well, you know, a lot of people I know who follow county government have focused on, those were the two big expenditures that came out, and of course, they, they were approved last year, they actually showed up in 2015, and so, so these numbers, this is, the presentation is an important part of the county budget, but it's not the whole enchilada.
It is not. Highlights, it's highlights.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on October 29, 2015.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of October 29th results in one item for your consideration, and that item is the adult detention facility, public restroom in the main lobby, Facilities Department. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Van Asdale Construction in the amount of $68,600. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval of this item.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I'm going to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Morning Commissioners, Ron Holt, Acton County Manager. You have the consent agenda items L through V, recommend approval.
Commissioner, what's, Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of items on the consent agenda that I would like to have pulled off the consent for some discussion. That's items N and O, so I can make a motion, we'd pull those two items off the consent agenda.
Can you make a motion to approve the consent agenda without?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the items N and O.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enrew.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
So everything passes except for item N and O, and we can open up the, the discussion
Chairman, I guess on item N, I assume we'll take these one at a time. Item N is the annual, annual fee for membership of the South Central Kansas Economic Development District. I am, I am supportive of what we call SKED. They, they have done some, I think, very necessary and effective things, trying to move business in, into success. Some things they do are very, very complicated and difficult, and I think they perform a really necessary service for, for companies, specifically, I'm thinking of the, the tactical firearms is a, is a great example, that would have never happened had it not been for SKED. So I am supportive of SKED, however, looking back at the budget cycle, you know, we did spend a lot of time, I spent a lot of time looking at different budget cuts, and what's being, what's before us right now is a full, full restoration of the, of the full amount that was considered even before the budget cycle. During the budget cycle, I made a lot of comments regarding the value of SKED, and I, at the time, I had supported this at a level of $60,000, and I would like to suggest that's the right amount today. I know, no, it's not exactly what they would want. I'm sure they could use the full amount, $84,000, but in light of the fact that we did have a lot of budget cuts to various agencies and things that are dependent on Sedgwick County for support, I think it's right that we go back to the mindset of our, of our budget adoption process and, and think about this in terms of other priorities. And so I'd like to suggest we would, we would approve this funding for SKED, but at a level of $60,000 per year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for discussion purposes.
Mr. Manager or Sherrell, do you have any comments on that?
Good morning, Commissioner Sherrell, Breathe, Sedgwick County Economic Developer. As a president for SKED, the five or, should I say, 14 counties that make up this organization have agreed per citizens at 17 cents per their citizenry population, and that is why we arrived at that figure, and that is based off we arrived at that figure, and that is based off of the 2010 census data. If we looked at it from the 2015 somewhat population for Sedgwick County, of course, that would take us in the range of 85 to almost $86,000. And what has happened, we're currently without an executive director for SKED, and for someone to really continue to provide that leadership, the former director resigned, and part reason was, as we look at the financial climate for the organization, we know that Sedgwick County, being the largest county, particularly in this region, South Central Region, and even within the state, that if we take that position, then the other counties, smaller counties, if they take that role as well too, we could see an organization that was initially established by Sedgwick County could possibly dissolve, and that would be pretty detrimental to small businesses in our region, and I know that's something we definitely do not want to see.
Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sherrell, you're saying that if we reduce our per capita contribution, the other partners will also reduce theirs? Is that...
That is a strong possibility. We had others, matter of fact, when Sedgwick County basically pulled out of support of SKED, we had Kingman County also to take that same posture, of course, with the concerted effort with the board, and we've kind of taken some leadership, board stepping up and engaging. Kingman County has stepped back up to the table, of course, with their 17 cents for citizenry for their area as well. And so it's kind of an equal share for each county.
But the per capita assessment is determined by a budget process that implies this is what it takes to effectively run the organization?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Is that per cap what we paid last year, the year before? Is that 17 cents, or is it a different number?
That's 17 cents. That is correct. Correct.
Been a few years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sherrell, if I understand what you're saying, is you're saying the whole organization's at risk if we don't appropriate, what was it, $84,722? If we appropriate $84,721, the whole thing may hold?
Well, there are some challenges. There are some challenges, Commissioner Peter John, and some of those challenges is based off of the decline with regards to some of the other grant opportunities that have come through for SKED as a not-for-profit organization, an entity, and some of those NSP that helped out with housing, some of the federal grants as well too that came down, that, of course, it puts a tremendous strain on the organization, and when you look at the staffing, we have reduced some of the staffing to try to maintain our sustainability at the level that we're currently at, and we could definitely see that there's any additional burden towards the funding for SKED could really be problematic.
Help me out, my memory isn't quite as good as I'd like it to be. Is $84,000, is how big a percentage of your current year 2015 budget, which I assume are amounts roughly the same this year that you're asking for for next year? So the total amount for SKED, its total operation, they're planning to spend how much this year?
I have our CFO with us as well too. Daniel, if you come and be able to speak to that number in more specifics.
Morning, Daniel Bass, CFO for SKED. The current budget for SKED is $900,000 approximately, including Sedgwick County's full investment. So without that, you're looking at about $815,000. So Sedgwick County's investment is approximately 10% of our total budget.
Okay, because if Commissioner Howell's notion went into place, that would be a reduction of roughly $24,000, $25,000, somewhere in that neighborhood, out of a total budget of a little less than a million, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Enruh?
Well, I think that we ought to continue our support for SKED. I think it's a valuable organization. It's a partnership for our South Central Kansas region, and changing our, arbitrarily changing our support level, when this has been the level for several years, I think, is not being a good partner, and I don't know what our justification is for that reduction. So I won't support the motion. I will be supportive of the funding request.
Would you like to make a substitute motion?
Sure, if that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we fund the annual fee membership in South Central Kansas Economic Development District at $84,722. I believe it's in...
That is correct.
$84,722.
I'll second it for us to have some conversation about it.
Commissioner Norton?
I'm a little concerned. We've gone through this gyration through the budget. We should have never defunded SKED. In fact, in my mind, there's other organizations that are of regional significance that we never should have gotten out of, and REEP is one of them. It had a long-term collaboration with a lot of counties and municipalities, and it was focused on regional area economic development. So it concerns me that we're kind of kicking this ball around, not to mention that we still haven't resolved what we're going to do with the Greater Wichita Partnership, because they are so critical to what is happening in our catchment area as far as economic development. I've, you know, been involved with the Leadership Council. I know Commissioner Enruh has been involved with it. There's some tremendous plans that are coming out of GWDC and WDDC and the partnership that will add to the economic vitality of our community, and we're just kind of piecemealing our thoughts about economic development and how we participate, and I don't think that's good. It makes it hard, as Sherrell has talked about, to keep their organization stable, and I think we should be players in that conversation. We've been players and leaders for many years when it comes to economic development and infrastructure and helping build this community, and now we kind of play around with it. We hold out, it is a carrot for people to come and talk to us, and I don't find that the way I want to do business. I'll be supportive of this motion. I will not be supportive of one that would limit what we're going to do. But I have concerns that we're not doing what we should totally for economic development in our community. That's all I have.
Commissioners, if I might add one thing, that SKED had looked at and continued to look at establishing a not-for-profit entity that could help somewhat leverage or support the not-for-profit portion of SKED, and it was rejected, and there were some reasons from the EDA that they did not see in our initial proposal that fully encompassed the economic development portion of it, which was a very narrowly scoped. So of course, we were putting our hits back together again and talking with our stakeholders, as well as with the SBA Regional Director, Wayne Bell, here locally, who was very much supportive of our initial letter to do that. And the reason for that is so that we will not, or should I say better, be positioned in case funding from Sedgwick County or any other entity for that reason should decide that they did not want to continue being a part of the organization.
Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I appreciate Commissioner Norton's comments, and I am assuming or hopeful anyway that approval of this motion, this substitute motion, would not preclude our involvement in GWDC and from comment made by our CFO at staff meeting yesterday, hopefully even at last year's level. But I agree that some of the conversations and decisions we made in economic development in the last year for me have been painful decisions, but at this point in time, I think we should support SKED, and I look forward to a presentation by GWDC.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm struggling because we've talked a lot about economic development. We had the presentation from the third quarter on how we stand financially, and the numbers aren't where we want them to be, and the question is, is why and what can we do about it? The thing I like about SKED does work on a regional basis. Things I have some concerns about, though, are the performance for the amount of money. I mean, to try and figure out a rate of return, and is this the best way to do it, or are these projects that would have occurred otherwise? This is always very hard for me in terms of trying to find out, and we struggled budgetarily on it, and since this is a, to give 100% restoration with the other budgeting problems that we have, I can't be supportive of this motion, although I certainly don't want to leave you all in the position where you would not have support, but I'm striving to try and figure out the way that we can get the best performance, the best value, the best achievement in terms of the money that we would allocate to go into trying to strengthen our local economy. And with the challenges that we faced that were outlined in the third quarter financial presentation we had, that's leaving me, if we would restore you all to this 100% of where you were funded, that's just not a number that I'm comfortable with today, and I appreciate your information and both your efforts to try and give us the data that we could make a better decision, but this is a motion I can't support. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to just remind my colleagues in the audience that the budget did include a $310,000 allotment for economic development. I think it's presumed by some on this bench that should we fully restore the funding for SKED, that there's going to be other monies needed to support GWDC to its fullest amount. That's $300,000. We have discussed at staff meetings the idea of an Almond Budsmen. I don't know what the cost of that would be, but my assumption would be somewhere between $75,000, let's say $75,000 for that, if we were to do that. And there's some reasons why an Almond Budsmen might be a more effective way of dealing with some of the complexities of starting business. We're trying to support the Wichita Chamber and the Wichita Independent Business Association and their efforts as well, and we also have never really discussed and honed in on a dollar value, if we're going to support it all, the Greater Wichita Partnership. I guess my question is, you know, if we were to support this at the full amount, what about these other entities? Where's that money going to come from? I would say we had, again, another negative report from a financial statement, a financial snapshot, if you will, of where we're at right now. Some might argue that the way to solve that problem is to invest more in economic development, and that's how you play yourself out. We've done that in the past. This is 2015, and we've been invested in these things for a very long time, and the numbers just don't reflect, I guess, an effective response to this type of investment. I'm not saying that we should not invest this money in some of these things. I think it's a worthy endeavor, but to what level, and how do you measure success? So I'm going to oppose the current motion, and I'll support my motion to go at 60, if this loan should fail. I guess, I would ask my colleagues that are supporting this motion to indicate, what is their plan for these other entities? Where is that money going to come from? I'd like to hear their answer to that question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I struggle with the word investment any time that a governmental body is involved, because it seems to be the politically correct word for government spending, and we're allocating taxpayer funds, it's government spending, and we don't have the setup that the private sector has in terms of an investment, in terms of being able to say, here's a rate of return, here's a dividend, here's a return of capital, and in that sense. So I think what we have in front of us here is a piece of government spending discussion that we have, and that's why I'm uncomfortable when the word investment gets thrown out, and I wanted to just get that on the records. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sherrell, there's been an implication that SKED's been less ineffective, hasn't met any of your goals, and that's the basis for a 30% cut in your funding. Can you give me any data points that would show your effectiveness and your wins in the community?
You know, I could speak specifically, I think it was made reference earlier, to the artillery range that was established there on North Greenwich Road. That's part of what we call a 504 program, where we work in conjunction with SBA, and as a result of those funding, as those dollars are created, they stay, continue in the system support SKED until that particular loan is paid off. So of course, as we get a number of those in the pipeline, which we plan to do, and we have some, but we, of course, plan to increase them because they can help us from the standpoint of sustainability to do what we do. Now, if it's a new construction, it takes a little longer before you see the realization of those dollars. For example, if we initiated 2015, and we may not see the realization of that being manifested until 2017. So of course, as we continue to build those up in the pipeline, and SBA requires for us to do at least a minimum of two of those for four years, well, we definitely plan to increase that, and I say we, I'm saying that as a board member. I work for Sedgwick County. I'm just the representative for Sedgwick County on that board to make sure, to ensure the success of that organization. And I can say, in my 14 years of being a part of that board, we have done nothing but create small businesses that continue to grow, and of course, create jobs that's pouring back into our tax economy.
Well, it seems, I recall that you sent us a document that had about 20 different businesses that used your services in one way or another. We helped them secure financing, and they were all, well, I don't know, I shouldn't say. I was going to say that nearly all of them in Sedgwick County, but in my estimation, you've done a good job and produced for us what I think is a reasonable value for our participation, and so that's why I'm going to support the substitute motion.
All righty. Do we have a motion in a second? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Peter John.
No.
Commissioner, Chairman Ransah.
No. So that motion fails two to three. We're back to the original motion of $60,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Be honest there. Any Commissioners have...
Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll support this underlying motion, although I don't approve of the amount. I don't understand the arbitrariness of the reduction, but I'm fearful that not supporting it could be worse for you than, so that's my position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
No. Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now we're to item O, which is the only remaining item on the consent agenda. Does anyone have comments on item O?
Well, see, none. I'll make a, Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the membership that's going to be effective January 1 next year, and the reason I attended a meeting, that there's about 30 Kansas counties that are members of this organization, but what has impressed me about their organization is the fact that their leadership, they've been able to get in front of finding out the regulatory burdens that are coming at us, and also coming up with nonjudicial but regulatory response options that I think have the opportunity to try and make sure that the federal government is complying with their own rules and regulations internally. It's really important, because the federal government's, you know, isn't passing many laws. Congress isn't doing much. They approve a post office every now and then and get a new name for naming that post office, and every once in a while, make, do some other businesses. But what's actually coming out is the bureaucracy is issuing rules and regulations five days a week. Of course, the other two days, the government's closed, but we have, I think, heard like 80,000 pages a year of new federal rules and regulations come out, and the federal government has a very structured environment in terms of how they have to go through the process of approval. The waters of the... how they have to go through the process of approval. The waters of the United States has been through an extended regulatory process in terms of the federal takeover of every huddle, drainage ditch, infrequently running low-lying area in the entire country, and efforts to change this at the legislative side in Congress, the majority of the Senate wasn't able to move in that direction, even though that's the direction they wanted to go earlier this week, so this is an effort, this is an organization that I think would be a positive for Sedgwick County to have a membership in, and I plan to support this motion, and we'll make a motion that we take a membership in this organization, the fiscal price tags between $7,000 and $8,000 a year, Mr. Chairman, but I believe it is well worth it in terms of giving us an opportunity to have an impact in the regulatory area, because particularly related to new mandates focused on not only regulations relating to water and similar rules in that regard, but also issues related to challenges with fish, bats, skunks, mammals in general, birds, and other wildlife.
I'll second your motion. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to speak to a couple of comments that I read in the paper regarding this issue. I don't believe this is just a Western Kansas issue. I think every county in Kansas is dealing with the federal regulations that impact their operations, and we are not exempt from that. We've had a number of restrictions here in our own county, and how it impacts our road projects specifically. I saw that in that article, there are projects, even in 2016, that will be impacted by federal restrictions on what you can do and when you can do it. This is a new member, this is a new organization that I think has a very narrow focus, and I'm hoping that they're very effective because of that. That's actually a good thing. One of my criticisms of some of the other organizations is they're very broad-focused, and because of that, you find things you may not agree with in their platform, and also, I believe, because they're so broad-focused, that they are also somewhat ineffective in accomplishing any of their goals. This organization is narrow-focused, and I believe that they'll be more effective as a result of that, and they'll have a much more passionate agreement with the things that they're fighting. So, yes, we do have our own Sedgwick County lobbyist in Topeka, and they are fighting issues that we have raised, but these are issues I think are also very important, and I would like to partner with these other 30 counties, and I believe once we do this, we'll see other counties, even east of Sedgwick County, that would also agree with us. Also, let me also say, after the first year, the dues go down to just above $5,000 per year. These other organizations are much more expensive, so this is a fairly small amount of money. It has a great impact on what we do here, and if they're successful in their goals, then I think this is definitely money well spent. I'm willing to support this, at least initially, to find out how they do. I'd like to give them the chance to fight for Sedgwick County, and if in the future they prove themselves to be ineffective, then I would be willing to reconsider supporting this membership, but for right now, I think this is certainly worth our effort, so I would be supportive of the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll say, I attended one of the meetings for the KNRC earlier this year out in Oakley, Kansas. It was a very good meeting, very well attended by commissioners and some state-elected officials as well, had some people from around the country. As speakers, that was very good, very well done. I'll be fully supportive of joining this one. I haven't read the papers, but if someone is saying this is just the Western Kansas issue, then they don't understand what the Kansas National Resource Coalition is all about. Certainly, it did start in Western Kansas, and it is a true grassroots initiative, but it affects all of us. The federal government and these EPA rulings affect us all, and if we can form a positive partnership in a way that would help us all, I think we need to do that. We've been in some other partnerships with the organizations. I mean, if you look at the materials we get from the KNRC, it's high quality, it's very well done, they know what they're doing, and they provided this information and feedback that we would never get from, example, NACO or KAC or REEP or any other organization, because they are so focused and they know what they're doing. This is, this is, you know, we've gotten out of some other organizations that were actually counterproductive to what they're trying to do, and this is a positive step for us, and if we can partner with them and use their resources and their knowledge and work together, I think this is a positive step forward. I would encourage those who have concerns to attend some of their meetings in the future, and I think you'll come away very appreciative of everything that they're doing, and have a better understanding of the fight they're trying to fight for us, so I'll be supportive. With that, Madam Clerk, call the vote?
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransau?
Aye. We're done with the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have no legislative issue discussed this time, so we're now at the other portion of our meeting. Commissioners, do you have anything for other? Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go back to my old days. When I first came on this commission, one of the things that we structured and challenged on was our jail population, and had a little over 1,400 people in the sheriff's custody as of this morning. I mention that because I was looking back at why, what's important in November 4th in American history, and doggone it, almost everything that they had listed on November 4th related to who got elected president in which election, and frankly, I didn't want to go through that this morning. But history is important to understand the present, and what we do have, and I'm not sure if Kelly Arnold, our county clerk, has provided this in terms of having it online yet today. I hope it is, and I know it will be shortly, if it's not already, but the 2015 property tax mill levies are up, and of course, as a county commissioner, I firmly believe we should be, every elected body should not only be voting on our budget, which we do, but also vote on the mill levy, which, under state law, we can't. I think that needs to be changed, and that's an issue, continuing issue that I have, but we've got a number of taxing jurisdictions here, and the bad news, I would say, in terms of focus, people focused on mill levies, and we've got, obviously, the countywide mill levy for us. We've got, all the municipalities have their mill levies, all the townships, twenty-some of the townships have their mill levies, and the school districts, including, we've got, the school district boundaries don't respect county lines in any way, shape, or form, as do some of the cities also. We've got two cities that straddle county lines, but the information here in terms of what the mill levy, your property taxes are going to be in 2000, for the 2015 year versus last year, are available and up, and it's important information for folks who want to understand where we are financially and what the property tax bill that's going to be going out shortly looks like. So I wanted to take this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to emphasize that the county clerk has pulled this information together. He's been kind enough to provide it to all of us on the commission. I hope he's provided it to the news media, as well as having it up on the Sedgwick County website here, but there's, it's interesting, because there are some significant variations by jurisdiction. I'm not going to go through them one by one, but in my opinion, it's interesting reading, so I wanted to call that to the attention at this part of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
See, nothing else for the other portion of our meeting. We have no fire agenda today, but we do have a need for executive session. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes to consider consultation with legal counsel on matters privileged in the attorney-client relationship relating to legal advice, preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property for public purposes, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 12:25 PM.
Second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote?
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransau?
Aye. We'll now move to executive session.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten